Last time on Fable SMP, Ray went over to Sherbert's house to tell them the truth about them being sick, and also check in after what he knew Centros was going to go offer. He knew Sherbert was going to get the same offer everyone else did with the "take a shot, hit me with your sword." And, well, Sherbert wasn't very truthful with Ray, but Ray doesn't know that. Sherbert told Ray they didn't take his sword and that Centros left completely. Skipped town, saying that he didn't want to deal with everyone's problems after that, and there was nothing left for him. So... Ray was kind of crushed, but... There was unfortunately some convincing. There was belief in what Sherbert told him, because Centros has done a lot of bad things to them, and Ray has been very conflicted about their friendship in the past. So he went over to David's base, where it is now, found Hope, and brought her home. And that's where we ended Lore last time. So, we're gonna go ahead and get into it today. Hi, all of you. I hope Hope is doing okay. And Nana, shouldn't you be over with Jamie? You're supposed to be over with Jamie, silly girl. Hi. Hi there.
Hi. So I have a question. Or rather, not really a question, more so is a comment.
Yeah.
When did we get more dogs? We sure have more dogs.
Okay, well, to be fair, they're not my dogs. Nana's Jamie's. And she just hasn't left our room. And this is Hope. This is Centros's dog.
At least Hope is smaller.
Yeah.
Why do we have them now? Like, I can kind of understand Jamie's, but why Centros's?
Centros... Centros left. Like...
What do you mean "left"? Like...
Like... Skipped town, left.
So we brought him back, and then he just gets up and disappears?
Yeah. He went over to Sherbert to offer the whole "strike me with a sword" deal, but Sherbert denied it, and after that, he... I guess decided he did everything he needed to. And left. I, um... I didn't think he was going to, but I guess I feel kind of like an idiot now.
I wouldn't have thought that either, but I...
Sherbert said he didn't want to deal with all of our issues anymore. And I know that sounds kind of, I don't know, out of the blue, but actually, I kind of... I guess I was more honest with him than most other people. And that probably... Might not have been the best choice. I just didn't think he was gonna go.
That's not something you could have predicted or anything, though. I mean...
I just feel dumb.
You're not dumb for trying to see the best in someone who's... Well, was trying to be better. You're not dumb for that, Ray.
I mean, I don't exactly think he's all that dumb for skipping out either. A lot of people have a lot of hard feelings about him. I'm sure that it's... It was probably...
Yeah.
Probably just him reaching his... Realization that the only way he's gonna get a fresh start might be to leave.
Yeah, I guess I would be sort of a hypocrite if I judged him for that, seeing as that's kind of what I used to do.
I just, I don't know. I... Kind of told him about how... My sickness wasn't really getting better. And I asked, just if anything happened, I wanted to make sure someone was around who could watch everyone. And, I don't know, just... I thought he'd hold his promise. But, um... I don't know. I guess I just feel really lost about everything right now. Jamie and Athena know that I'm not being honest with them. Athena, I overheard them telling Jamie that they overheard. Well, they didn't even need to overhear everything. They were there when you had to bring me home. And I don't want to, like, lie to them. I'm not purposely being dishonest. I just...
I know, love. I know.
Sorry. I know you know. I just don't know what to do.
I don't want to pressure you into telling them, but they're not kids. You know that, right? And they've dealt with a lot of stuff, and I think they can handle it. I don't want you to... I'm sure it would be nice for them to hear it directly from you, though, right?
Yeah. And it's not because they're... It's not because they're younger than... It's not that. It's just...
I know.
I don't like making anyone worrying.
I know. And I know you want to just protect them from everything and anything that can do harm in this world, because that's what I want to do, but it's... Sometimes it's not the most viable option.
Yeah. We should probably head out from the meeting, huh?
Yeah. We can talk more about this later if you want.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
Yeah, okay.
Is it okay if I bring Hope?
Yeah.
Let's go get the others.
How many dogs do we have now?
Hi.
Hi.
We're dancing with the bird.
Come on, we're gonna be late.
Sorry. How many dogs have? How? What?
Many.
He's fine.
Come on, you two. We have to go.
Okidoki.
Okay.
Connor, come on, Connor.
He'll figure it out.
Bye, Connor.
Bye, see you. Just have a good day while we're gone.
Yeah.
Oh, we're also bringing a cat. Maybe I shouldn't bring Hope.
No!
The cat is following you. Alium is following.
Yeah, okay, I guess you can come too.
Okay.
All right.
Well, let's go.
Apparently.
If you go in little jumps, the dogs will still teleport with you. Maybe. I spoke... Nope, JK, there she is.
Alium will figure it out eventually. I'm not too worried.
There, there.
I got it.
There you go. Good job, Alium.
Go in.
Don't push me off!
Don't push me off. Come on, go, go!
Hi.
Hello.
Oh, I guess we never move the chairs back in, huh?
Hi.
We can move the chairs.
Everyone grab a chair! Grab a chair.
Why would one require a chair?
You talk funny.
Oshie!
Don't say that, people. Oshie!
I'm not sure what you mean by this.
People like to... I guess their legs get tired when they stand for too long?
I want to make up for that for my day by...
Their legs run out of battery.
I understand.
Yeah, boom!
I don't know how to do a chair.
Yo, what's the spacing of these?
I'm missing a chair arm.
You know what? I have a regular chair.
There's some arms over here.
Someone forgot some pieces.
I don't know what I'm doing with a chair.
I have an extra chair. I don't know what to do with this.
We don't need that many chairs. It's fine.
I've never built anything from Ikea, but I feel like this is an experience. This one's for Connor. Come here.
It's for Connor! Kind of get in your chair, sir.
Come on, come on.
You can do it. I believe in you.
I guess I don't actually need a chair. I need to be up here, huh? Okay.
I usually sit up right here anyways.
Okay, um, well, I guess, uh, thank you all for coming on kind of a short-ish notice for town meeting stuff. We have some things that have been hap... Sit. There you go. We have some stuff that have been happening across the server that... Would probably be good to get everyone on the same page for. So, I guess... Hope be quiet. I guess we'll, uh... I'll start with... Yeah. I'll start off with Perix. For those of you that don't know, there is a mirror that we... I'm just gonna scoot up. Yeah. There is a mirror called Perix that was last seen on the beach, uh, that we had the beach party out at. It is of a magenta and teal, with the green gems in it. If you find this, please let me know immediately. We, uh... This mirror isn't just a normal thing. It is a dangerous artifact. It causes illusions and... The growth of... Well, we think it's causing the growth of what's called skulk. Right now, we're still looking for it, but it... And I say it's a dangerous artifact. It's... It holds a piece of a god's soul, the goddess Perix, goddess of illusion. And we're looking for it. Just be careful of what you see around it. If you find it, please be careful. And... For the skulk that I mentioned, when we first had Perix out in the archives, it caused growth of something we hadn't seen before. And this skulk appeared again after the mirror was in our house for a while. So we think the growth of it is linked to that. If you find skulk, it's not inherently dangerous if you touch it or are around it, but burning it... Or heat is very dangerous. It causes the release of spores. Jamie and Athena have been helping me do tests. We've found a safe way to get rid of it is actually through freezing it and then powderizing it, and then burning it. Athena is working on a device that will allow this to happen pretty quickly, so that we can basically get rid of it.
Yeah, if you find any skulk, let me know, and give it to me so that I can put it in the reverse incinerator.
Yeah. If you do burn it, it causes sickness. So just be careful around it, okay? The main reason I actually called this meeting, though, is, well, there's one other thing that we aren't actually sure if it's related to Perix and skulk or not, but there's been three attacks on the town. First was Jamie's tower, then our animal pen, and Oshie, was your shop attacked?
Yeah, it was. I had found skulk at it, and I didn't really know what it was. I don't think it was TNT or Creeper, since there was no damage to the ground, or at least not like the normal amount, but I found skulk in my water as well.
At the other two locations, we found skulk as well. Which is why we're not sure if it's connected... Well, we're not sure how it's connected. It's connected. We're just not sure how yet.
Right.
Has anybody seen, like, anything around it? Like, something's doing it, or...
We didn't see anything, and Jamie talked to Picasso, our goat. And Jamie talked to Nana, their dog, that was around them, right?
I mean, so far, I don't know when Oshie's shop happened, but Picasso and Nana both said that it happened at night, so they didn't see anything because they were asleep. They were just woken up by the explosion.
I don't know when my shop happened. I had came back from being with Chaos at Seaside, so...
I guess it's probably safe to assume it probably also happened at night?
I have, yeah.
But I don't know.
It's likely. I knew we could ask.
True, yeah. We can confirm that theory at some point.
Can I suggest something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're being attacked, and we don't know what's causing it. Can we, like, get a group of people to, like, look for clues or something? Like, me and Oshie, as co-kings, request a neighborhood watch? Also, we're gay now, so...
I mean...
I feel like that wasn't relevant information just yet. It's always relevant.
It's very relevant. But I mean, if, like, I know that it's, like, there was a person who, you know, was known for blowing stuff up, and now there's things blowing up.
It wasn't me this time, I swear.
No, not you, Chaos. I mean, Centros. Are we 100% sure?
Centros... Centros left... Town, I think, for good this time.
What do you mean he left?
He... He... After I remembered, he came to me and, guessing, did the same thing he did to all of you. Said, "Take the sword, take a swing." I didn't do it, and after that, he just said he was gonna leave.
No, but I made him promise that he was gonna come back, or else I was going to hunt him down and get rid of him. Uh, so, he's gonna come back.
I don't... I don't think so.
I'll go find him later. Don't worry.
He said he didn't want to... He said he didn't want to deal with our problems anymore.
Our problems?
Yeah, I'm gonna go hunt him down.
I don't know where he is.
Wasn't most of your problems last time caused by him?
Yeah, he caused problems, so he doesn't get to run away from that.
Bro. I mean, to be fair, isn't it better that he's kind of gone?
Yes. He tried to kill...
Don't shoot me for that!
It's healing.
No, you... Yeah, I think it's a good thing that he's gone.
I gotta agree, honestly. I don't... Me, my only interaction with Centros was us having a yelling fit, pretty much, and him trying to act like... I don't know, that he was absolved on a redemption arc, and I don't know. This was back before most people remember, so I don't know if he'd talked to anybody else.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I... I don't know, uh, where he went. But I think your idea of, like, a town watch is a good idea. I think that'd be really smart, Chaos. Especially if this is happening at night.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd be... If we want to do watches, I'd be down to go on, like, first watch.
Should we organize teams for this or something?
Don't go alone, please.
Yeah, I feel like going alone is probably, like, a really bad idea. Bring rockets as well for your Alitra.
Am I going on my buddy system arc again?
Oh my god!
I have to start nagging all of you.
Not again!
He said the same.
Is this a repeated thing that happens?
Uh, yes.
Never go alone, Oshie.
And it causes many headaches.
I'd be down to go on first watch with you guys.
Yeah!
Oh, yeah! Yeah!
Oh, yeah, that'd be also really good, because, you know, you can talk to any animals we might have seen.
Yeah. We could stop by my shop, and we could, like, talk to them.
I do not require sleep. Would my assistance be helpful?
That's probably cool.
How do you do that?
I am a robot.
I mean, we could... Probably we'll need more than just one team set up shifts and stuff.
Yeah, you'll figure it out.
I mean, to be fair, all of us live here, or at least it's in some capacity, so it's probably... It's better that we have more people, because if it's a repeated thing, I don't really want this happening more, or at least I want to know what's going on, because...
Yeah. No, I agree. I think this is a really good idea. I, um... Hi, Alium. Athena, your cat?
Yeah, he's got a mind of his own. I've stopped trying to stop them from doing stuff.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, if... Maybe if, if, Chaos, if you want to organize, you know, groups and stuff, I'd really like to see whatever results if people find. Yes, okay, you're welcome up here on the stage with me. You're...
Nope.
Nope, never mind.
And they're done.
As soon as you gave him permission, he didn't want to go up there.
I mean, sure.
That is just a cat. That's a real-life cat.
He's doing what he do.
Me, Oshie, and Jamie can all take the first watch, and then we'll see what we can get out of that and who's able to do everything.
Something doing. Yeah.
Melt them out.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think that'd be good to work on this, but, um... Yeah, so if anyone sees Perix... The mirror, let me know. Skulk can be safely removed with a silk touch tool and delivered to Athena. And if you're interested in being part of the watch, I guess make sure you talk to Chaos.
Um, question. What do we do if we, like, find Perix? Do we, like, give it to you, or... Like, hold on to it? Put it in a box?
Put it in a box.
I mean, I guess we don't actually have a plan.
Oh, that's true.
I, um... I guess I don't actually know what we're gonna do with it afterwards. I just want to make sure we know where it is, because then we could maybe figure out what to do with it, instead of playing kind of a guessing game.
I mean, we could always just toss it into a lake in the nether. That's always a good solution.
We can see if we can destroy it. How's that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably a good idea.
Smash it against the wall a few times.
For the time being, like, encasing it in, like, obsidian or something?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, okay. We're looking for it to hopefully figure out a way that we can get rid of it.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else that has been going on, or things people want to bring up, or questions you have? We've been doing a bunch of research on everything, so if you have stuff, I can always do my best to explain.
Um, question. How are you feeling? I know you were... I know you were, um, you were, uh, sick for a little bit.
Uh, we're working on it.
So not 100%?
Caspian got sick, but he got better, so...
But you are not...
Not at the moment.
Not yet.
Athena's been around Ray a lot, though, and they haven't gotten sick, so I don't think it's contagious.
We don't think it's contagious.
We do a lot of cut-up piles, and none of us gotten sick, so I think you guys are all in the clear. It's not...
No, it doesn't seem contagious from person to person, just if you burn it and get these spores in your lungs.
Don't burn skulk. Give it to me, and then I'll turn it into a popsicle.
Don't eat it, though.
Okay, I was about to ask.
That was the next part of that.
I was about to ask. What do you think would hap...
Nope.
You will get sick.
You don't know that. You're not breathing it in.
We're not gonna test it, though.
We're not gonna. Why not?
Yeah.
Because if something goes wrong, we don't know how to fix it.
Listen, mouth hot. Hot bad for skulk. Don't do it.
Yeah. So I guess that's all I had. I just wanted to, I don't know, get everyone on the same page and also warn people that, well, I guess... Whatever is harming thing, it's not just structures. We think whatever is... It... We think that it actually killed one of our pets.
What?
So, please be careful, whatever you do find. Whatever it is does seem to be dangerous.
Yeah. This is especially why buddy system is important.
Yeah. But that's... That's everything I had. I guess thank you all for coming, meeting adjourned.
Yeah. Throw this diamond at me.
I guess you get a free diamond.
I know, it wasn't mine.
Someone gets it.
All right, well...
Everyone around the cat now.
Cat pushed me out of the seat.
I guess we're gonna head back.
Yeah.
All right. Be safe, I guess. Don't get murdered.
Yeah, what she said. Yep.
Jamie and Athena, are you coming?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Come on, Alium.
Okay, we got Connor, we got Alium, we got Hope. Hope, we got a little trail.
We got a little army of pets.
It is, yep.
I'm gonna make sure Seven has a place to go.
Yeah.
Okay. Oshie, stop.
There, that went, um... That went okay, right?
Yeah.
I mean, as good as it's probably gonna be to be like
Probably.
Hi, here's a bunch of not great stuff. But at least now everyone knows, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a search, watch, party, whatever, probably a good idea.
Yeah.
I agree.
I probably not join too many of the searches, just so that I can focus on mechanics of making that rotisserie automated.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know if you know, Caspian, the reverse incinerator has been dubbed the rotisserie, because if, if you-
Couldn't pronounce it.
If you spell incinerator backwards, that's about the word.
Yeah.
Alright then.
But, um... Yeah. Thank you. Uh, Jamie, you're doing okay sharing a room with Athena? We can probably build a house expansion if you guys want.
I think we're good.
Yeah, okay.
We bunked our beds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And all the animals kinda congregate in there.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Hi, Hope. How are you doing?
Is, is she doing okay?
I'm sorry. Yeah. She just says she misses him. That's understandable.
I, um... I guess I should probably be honest to you guys, uh... with the whole sickness thing. Um... I'm, well, I guess I kind of I know that Athena told you, Jamie, I kind of maybe overheard it a little bit. I'm not doing great, we don't know how to fix it right now. And it seems like heat really does make it worse, um... I passed out on a trip to the nether. And have been coughing up blood with it. Um, so we're um, we're working on a solution, but well, right now, that doesn't seem to be going away on its own at all, and it seems that potions only seem to be kind of like a Band-Aid, not a solution.
Band-Aid.
We'll figure it out, though. We haven't faced a problem that we haven't figured out yet, so I guess you overheard me saying that once before, and I, I meant it. I mean, you guys figured it out when Athena was sick, we'll figure, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
We always do.
Yeah.
We, against every single odd, got almost everyone's memories back. You, we solved with the sickness.
Yeah.
You opened an end portal, we got this.
Yeah.
See, Funnar agrees.
You're right. You're right. Okay. Thank you. And I'm sorry I wasn't really honest with it before.
It's okay. I know being sick and finding out about it and not knowing what to do is really hard.
Yeah, guess if anyone knows.
Yeah, it sucks, but and like, it, there's that fear of like, if you tell everybody, then they're just gonna worry all the time and you're putting that on them, but you're not putting it on us. We're helping you because we love you.
Thank you. Yeah. You were right, um, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, also, it's, it's a little bit interesting that you keep trying to not tell me things and then I just hear them anyways.
Look, apparently I have a problem called forgetting that everyone I live with has really good hearing, and it's unfair.
It's, I got big ears.
Yeah, well, it's on his axe.
Yeah!
Okay, you two go have fun.
We're gonna go dance with the bird again.
Okay.
Enjoy yourselves. Here, I, we don't have to have Hope in the bedroom again, we can leave it out here, yeah?
I sure, I sure slept in Axe's room, because there definitely was, and not never in there for me.
Sorry.
We're gonna need a bigger bed. You don't have to apologize.
Keep building bed expansions for the number of boyfriends and dogs we gain?
Well, I don't really see us getting a new boyfriend anytime soon.
But apparently dogs are on the table.
Apparently dogs are on the table.
Yeah. Thank you for pushing me to be honest.
Oh, it's hard sometimes.
Yeah. But-
You know? Just because, like, you help everybody else with their pro- problems and people can help you with yours, it's not-
I, I know, I just I, I know I, I guess it's just I, I've said this a few times, I, I think we're trying to comfort other people. Knowing something logically and knowing it like actually being able to internalize it.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna freak anyone out, I don't wanna make them worry, and I don't want them to think that my problems are too much. Because then something like Centros happens. Where I, I thought we were getting closer and better and and he left.
But I think talking about it and being honest will maybe help things from ever getting to a point like that. You don't have to tell everybody everything. But I also don't want you to have to handle everything on your own.
Yeah. Thank you.
Of course.
Hi.
Hi.
I want Axe to stop having to look through the caves. I would like him to come back.
Yeah. Me too.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm always here for you, you know that, right?
Yeah. I know.
Okay. Good. I love you.
I love you too.